I'll get to that later.
So, you guys know what you need to do.
Thank you, and thanks for addressing the things we brought up two months ago. We appreciate it.
I have to laugh about the well. Barry's La Brea, that senior, they drilled three holes before they got water.
That's unusual around here.
The existing well that they're using is probably about 20 feet now. The other well, the one that initially got water out of, is an Artesian well. There are three Artesian wells. There's one at the farmhouse Artesian, and there's one at Janet's house that's Artesian. So there's three Artesian wells that are within 300 yards of one another.
And he couldn't get water.
And he couldn't get water.
And my brother used to live across the street, and he had an Artesian well.
The corner house there has an Artesian well, used to run all the time.
Yeah, it was my brother's.
Is it still?
Yeah, it was.
Because it used to be a pipe there, ran constantly.
So when Barry's old house was sold, and that's when the second well got one of us, and I don't know if they didn't know they were crossing the line or not, but he did now. But I mean, at the time, they were drilling on Barry also.
Yeah, on Janet's.
I mean, that law was surveyed off.
But then it didn't, I don't mean it didn't matter, but it was bad, man.
It definitely matters.
So we have five wells anyway. Lots of water.
Thank you.
Okay, and I'll find those two. Now I'm building waivers.
Okay.
I don't know if you want, are these our plans?
Yeah, they're ours. You're gonna have no ones, right?
Yes.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Andy, we're getting around to your... Sorry to keep you waiting, but...
Yeah.
I didn't bring it, I didn't bring it because everybody had homework from last...
I like how you put that.
I got them with yours.
I wasn't here last meeting, so I have an awful excuse.
Listen, give the office, bring your homework.
Yeah, he was surfing.
Yeah, that's what, that's what I was doing.
That's good for the years.
I can put this back. We're not looking at your face.
Okay, which one do you want to...
Five, that one.
That one there, all right. Okay, and which section are we in?
508.
508, all right, I'll find it.
Page 14.
Yep, there's the mark.
Good, should be close to the finish line. Are we close to the finish line?
You're caught.
No, I could have done that.
Oh, okay.
Here is 14.
508.
Yeah, we're starting to say 508 on easements is where we're about to go. So again, for the benefit of drawing a clear best time. I did an initial draft, sent it to Scott. Scott added in some of the comments, the track changes that we see here. He and I met before the April meeting and went over all the comments here, so we were all on the same page. We left the comments, the track change, so you can see what the comments were, what's new, what's added, that sort of thing. For the most part, the sections that are in here, some of them match up with your current, some of them don't. But for the easements here, we're adding part about easements connected to a public right of way. And then G and H at the bottom, bottom there. G is probably relevant to the conversation you just had earlier, so I'll leave that for last. H talks about, over a large subdivision, has a stream, pond, or wetland, et cetera. A 10-foot easement around the perimeter. And that no building grading is permitted within that unless there's a DP permit for it. I mean, that's an existing water feature that's going to be controlled potentially by them.
Anyway, right?
The reason I have that in there, there's already, in either the zoning or the existing, I mean, there's already a requirement for like a 50-foot easement. But I wanted something specific to prohibit grading, at least that minimum amount of 10 feet within the edge of a stream or a wetland.
Okay, makes sense.
I mean, that's some of what we do for clients, that we grade right up to the edge of anything that we can get away with. So I'm trying to protect some natural resources here by getting a 10-foot property where no grading can be. That's what I recommend that be.
Is that consistent with other townships?
No.
Okay.
We were, our ordinance though presently says you have to have 50 foot.
But you can grade up to it, though.
You can grade.
That's the difference, Gus.
Oh, all right.
What's Armored Core Engineers say? I'm curious.
They'll take 60 days to comment and they'll get back to you.
I'm just curious, because I know they seem to have the audemn say over everything when it comes to water.
I'm sure that they would not have a problem with a 10-foot cushion.
No, no, the opposite. I think they might be fine to grade up to the wetland.
I went through that when we did the prep.
10-foot is perfectly reasonable.
And the prep people wanted to, what do you call it, stream bank?
Oh, they weren't repairing the conferences everywhere yet.
Well, yeah, but they, because of the fence, they wanted to... They're not correct, anyway. And the Armored Core Engineers person said, really touching anything close to that stream.
Okay.
Solar, sky, space easements, is that solar panels?
That's in the existing ordinance I just had up there as a, you know, point of discussion, whatever. It's exactly that. It prohibits someone from building a tower or planting really tall trees right next to someone's property to shade their solar panels that they should choose to have.
Okay.
And it's in your existing ordinance, so if you want to, we can put that in on the easement section or we can do with it, whatever you want.
In other words, if somebody has solar panels up in array, and the neighbor comes in, plants high trees to block it out.
Right, that's the legal, there's an inherent solar easement that they have to...
Trying to preclude a civil dispute.
G is, kind of talked about that existing lots, including some of the recent additions, private right of ways for easements less than 50, expand. There's a lot of other municipalities I do, this is fairly common on...
Like for flat lots, the many of them?
Or for road frontage, asking for, like, the road easements to be wide.
Yeah, but what if you run into what we just ran into, where it wasn't a road easement? It was an easement between...
Well, once you have a salvo, you have something to stand on, and what's this?
Well, but do you want to stand on making somebody 16-foot, 50-foot? That's my point.
You don't get into the whole legal battle.
Well, that's not, that was different than legal battle, a little more, the legal battle.
And you can also ask for a waiver.
Yeah, I think that's...
Typically, like especially with the one development we had a year and a half ago, where they tried to stick this road on this narrow little 20-foot lane, they have this huge grade.
Yeah, I know.
And they have no room at all for grading or storming.
I know, I remember it. There's times when it makes sense.
This is still sitting there. That guy walked away from it.
No, he didn't walk away from it, now he's back fighting it. It probably went up in court now.
49 other lots.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, there's validity to what you're saying here.
Yeah. I get it off of a public right of way.
The things like this are better, in Saldo, it's a little easier to do. Where you have it what you ideally will, and then you can adjust it. In situations like you...
Yeah, like we just had, yeah.
And waive it where...
Would it just be a waiver in that case? Or a variance?
Variance does not say anything.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, be a waiver.
And the zoning ordinance right now requires a minimum width of 30 feet.
Okay.
And remember, we talked that there's a number of things in your, stuck in your zoning ordinance that shouldn't be in the zoning, it should be in the Saldo.
Yes.
And there's some stuff in your Saldo, that current Saldo, that is zoning related, that's rambling up.
Should more.
Or you have them.
Yes, understood. Which is why we're doing this, yeah.
So one clarification, within subdivisions, there's a technical process, waiver and modification. waiver means you're, they don't have to meet, do the standard at all. Modification means they're changing the standard, so they could say, well, maybe your quarts 50, maybe we only can do 30.
Okay.
And doing modification to meet the standard part ways. It's similar to a variance where you're getting from it.
But the supervisors can approve it, as opposed to...
It's all the same, it's all the same process, it's just...
Supervisors.
Terminology is different.
Yeah, okay. I'm just trying to keep it away from a zoning variance board or something like that, that's my point.
As long as it's in Saldo, Saldo is, whatever you call it, it's up to the supervisor.
Yeah, it comes through us and then goes to the supervisor.
That's where, thank you, Andy.
Saldo goes through that process, right?
Yeah, all right.
509, and I'm gonna lump 509 and 510.
Before we move on, is there anyone having other questions or comments about any other items in the easing section?
I'm good with these, yeah.
509 and 510, I'll lump together because it's somewhat of the same thing. These address some design standards for certain types of development in addition to what is in the zoning. Zoning controls density and use form, Saldo controls design. This is making sure that some, some certain things that are design-related are also captured in the subdivision process. Design standards, access to circulation, grading, streets, booths. Scott?
You know, one point of discussion I wanted to note is about shared access drives.
Yeah, I saw that.
I know, some people like them, some people don't like them. So I wanted to make sure that was noted for the discussion.
Noted how?
I just, I wanted, I noted it on the PDF. I just wanted you to bring it to your attention, so that's...
Okay.
If you want, if you want to encourage shared access drives or not, it's...
I never want to encourage them, but we do have to live with them, you know.
You got them off of a labor camp.
Oh, you got them off of Gun Club, yeah.
You got crater, and you have to create it to do the car, because it's a shared thing that you don't...
Yeah.
I guess it's, this is specifically under a certain type of development, a residential, certain type of residential development, which quite frankly, I'd be real surprised if we actually got...
Way, way back when they sold lots, so now you got...
Yeah, we don't, the zoning ordinance right now, we don't allow private roads.
And it always comes up with an issue of maintenance, who's got to pay to maintain?
Yeah, when they knock on the door here.
Who's share, and how, do you get 50%? And the other guy doesn't want it.
The guy who loses right off the road, he's, then why am I paying for the rest of this?
The zoning now prohibits them?
Yeah.
I didn't remember that, okay.
There's two sets up there.
Because we certainly have them.
You've got one.
I got one next door to me.
That's right.
Yeah, but people do get along with it, that's rare.
Yeah, I haven't had any arguments with those folks.
Pardon me?
Haven't had any arguments.
No, good, they're...
Do you know the exact area, do you remember what section that was?
It's, oh, I've read that, and it's like...
Good question, Scott.
So our current zoning does not allow that?
That's, that's what Gus said, I did not remember that.
I'll find out what are...
With this, okay.
It's in there, I can find it.
Well, I don't want anything in this that contradicts our zoning, that's, and I think that's Scott's point as well.
Well, we talked last time about once we get to the, last month, that was when we get to the final product here, and we know what's going on here, and we know what needs, might need to come out of zoning because it's being too different from here.
Yeah.
Well, we'll go through and we can prepare the amendment that would remove that stuff...
From the zoning.
From the zoning ordinance, so that it can, so that the two can proceed at the same time.
Good.
So that you're, when the new Saldo is adopted, it's essentially two amendments, but it's adopting new Saldo and then removing the stuff from the conflicts from the zoning ordinance at the same time, so that it's, so that it, so that everything is the same, and there's no...
The same at the same time, yeah, okay.
Zoning ordinance 27-1010 talks about pathways and access.
I get to it. I have mine back there, but that means moving my chair and creating a lot of noise.
They're singing for him there.
27-1010.
Well, there's something else in there, isn't there?
Access drive.
Talks about two, two access points per lot.
And it's worth noting that PennDOT is cracking down on that sort of thing, especially on state roads.
Cracking down on what, two access points per lot, okay.
Yeah.
They don't want anymore.
They want, they want one, which is causing issues, issues for that, exactly that sort of climate that most ordinances have.
Yeah.
So they have to, the two, two with one gated, or that can open in case of emergencies.
Yeah, okay. But that's a state highway, isn't it?
Yeah, I tend to, I tend to think they've gone a little overboard on their, it's sort of an overreaction to past mistakes they've made in terms of access management design. I don't want to discourage them from seeing the light on some things, but they've gone, they've overcorrected. My personal opinion, I think they've overcorrected a little bit.
Do you see it?
And, and, we can go through it and, and double check and find...
Yeah, would you double check, just in the next meeting, just tell us exactly what that, where that is in language? I don't remember it, Gus, I'm not saying you're wrong, I just don't remember us prohibiting it.
Well, well, oh, well, because I have notes here about stuff that needs to cross check.
Okay, thank you.
Talks about, any reference, see, there's landscaping requirements in zoning, talking about cross check, cross-reference buildings in settings.
Okay.
On 510, on residential side, it talks about, you know, requiring off-street, off-street loading areas. That can be important depending on what type of non-residential development you're talking about, and where it is, about keeping things off of, off of main streets, public streets, for loading and unloaded purposes.
When you ever been through the apple country, when they're loading apples, they park in the road?
Yeah, boy.
Guilty.
Yeah. Left side towers have yet to the road, so do left side on the road.
Guilty is charged, right?
Yep. And we've had, the state boys have been there a couple times, and way to do it, that I'm on.
Go ahead, Andy, we're sorry to hold you up, apple talk.
The last part there is about just making sure that cross-reference parking, the parking section, so that it's clear that, that it, that has to comply with that, too.
Okay.
Section 511 talks about landscaping requirements, it cross-references zoning ordinance standards.
Okay.
But adds, part B to their ads about additional screening required, that can be required depending on the nature of those use and what the joint properties are. So if you have something where there's a bigger conflict than the zoning ordinance anticipates, you have something in the Salvo that can say, can we have the ability to step in and require more because we feel that this particular situation warrants it?
Okay.
So in that way, it's, it complies with the zoning, they can, and the zoning says they can't do more, this will allow you to do more, so it won't create a conflict with the zoning party.
Okay.
And C talks, talks about something that comes, that does come up about how long developers are responsible for replacing landscaping after approval. There, i.e. how long it has to be living before it's the responsibility of whoever owns, said law, and so on. Which does come up occasionally, and memorably, I remember one. Residential development in another municipality where they have street trees, and several property owners were unhappy with street, with street trees, so they said to the township, can we take them out? The township said, well, no, or it says they have to be alive by at this point. So are they still alive? Or said, well, yeah, they are. Said, well, they have to be alive for three years from this date. The property says, well, what about after that date? They have to be alive three years from that date. So what you do with them after those three years is entirely up to you.
Bang, change of goal.
But this, what, that, so how long does it have to be alive? Ideally, it's at a point where it's matured off of this, that it's established.
Who made the change from 18 to 12?
I did, I just took one growing season, one year.
One growing season. One thing I'll point out also is that those street trees, if, depends on your NPDS permit plan, they may be used for credits for...
Right.
If they are, you're...
Totally separate from that.
Yeah, if they are, you're not allowed to touch them.
Right, they, yeah, they have their own requirements, so this is totally separate.
So I'm curious, why, why did you reduce that from 18 to 12?
Just to make it a one growing season, one full year. If it's, if it's still alive after 12 months, it's more likely to be alive.
It's gonna be alright.
There's no difference between 12 and 18 months, that six extra months, there's no difference, really.
It's probably would depend on what's, what size you're putting in. If you're putting in the one-inch caliber trees, you know, as some of you're supposed to acquire, then maybe you need a little more, if you're acquiring bigger stuff.
Maybe you drag it to 18 or even 24 months.
I mean, I just see what's going on down at school. And then there, we've got what's there, you know? I'm not in favor of reducing the amount of time. I mean, what, why, that's just my view on it.
I feel better with 18, that's, that's why I asked, why.
I mean, it's a developer's responsibility, it's not ours, and...
What do you think?
I don't like to make a big deal about it.
Yeah.
I mean, trees aren't cheap either.
No.
Well, we have in our...
And you have somebody, you have a landscaper come in, now they weed whack around the bottom of them.
They ruin them, yeah, exactly.
That's six, that's six months may get you that.
Well, we have in the zoning ordinance where you're, you have a commercial property that goes up against residential, you have to have a buffer. And it has to be thick enough so that we can't see through it. So does that mean you have to have three, four trees deep, you know, in terms of thickness? So you can't see through it? And then the argument's always of how tall they have to be. If you go by a tree that's six feet tall, you're gonna spend a lot more for it than if it's four foot tall.
Okay, but what's, what's your, what's the requirement in the zoning ordinance for time? In other words, this issue?
We don't have time in here.
All right.
We didn't have time down here where they, when they were talking about the convenience store.
No.
Okay, we just had, what, three rows staggered?
Yeah.
Yeah, whatever.
We were resisting on three rows staggered, so you can't see through them.
So the way to get this point is with Saldo?
Exactly.
Or if there was another issue, but Saldo is gonna be our core way of getting it. So I would be more comfortable with 18.
I mean, that, me, I personally agree with that, that's my thought.
That's from my experience.
But also, I would imagine they don't want to bond some of that potentially.
Well, yeah, well, letters of credit and bonding has to be renewed every year, every 12 months.
Yes.
So, I mean, that's, that's another reason why I just put it at 12, but...
Okay, so that would go at 24.
Yeah, maybe a few in your 18.
There you go, two grow, two growing seasons.
Growing seasons.
And that's also more time that you have to hold on with a letter of credit or something.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, you see it all the time.
I agree, I mean, I'm saying these.
You may have a good, you may have a bad, back-to-back, you may have a good year, and then the next year it's dries up and you lose them.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's true.
Where you put them in, some places where they put this stuff, and they put them on shale rock, and then fire out, die out. They don't cut the root bolts out when they plant them.
There's a lot of reasons for that, man.
I pulled them out, they had the cage on them.
And again, it's the developer's...
Oh, yeah.
And that's exactly why I think you need more time.
They've had to wire cages on them.
And again, it's, it'd be a developer's responsibility and his call.
Right, right, right.
What we want is results.
Yes.
We want to, you know...
You want to see what's there after two years.
Right.
Well, do you want to say 24 then?
I'd do a 24.
Adjust. Any more of that? 512 light is pretty easy, we're adding that to cross, we already have lights requirements in your zoning ordinance to reference that, that over there. I did have another municipality which is in or...
Developed?
Developed municipality that wanted standard lighting ordinance, because they had some specific issues, you know, that if you have it, you can get, it's on your zoning ordinance, so it's just cross-reference that to make sure.
That's separate from the sports complex, though, right? Okay.
That particular one, they included some, they included some light standards for that, those type.
Those circumstances, which were very unique, were unique.
But again, there, there's also some fairly standard heights and, and standards from light, there's lighting models out there that talk about the heights, et cetera, for...
Directional glare, all those things, yeah, okay.
512 talks about development phase, development phasing.
A lot of times with developments, not all the roads will be constructed at once. A lot of times you'll have like one lag with the cul-de-sac for phase one. But that would not be able to be approved under the current, under this...
Under this Salvo, okay.
Because it requires two points of access for...
Well, from start, start to finish, yeah.
So I'm working on cutting that back down to just the one.
The one for how long? The one forever?
No, no, it's whatever...
Each phase, okay, I see it now.
Whatever proof...
Okay, yeah, I got it, okay. Andy, any comment to that?
No, I guess the other ones...
You'd have to have like a horseshoe street in every single...
That seems reasonable, a cogewony.
I agree with Scott.
Development experience, yeah. Yeah.
You don't want to get into that, it's gonna be, yeah.
Yeah.
And the next part of this, I have a real pet peeve about this, we see it at Flowing Springs even. Someone builds a road and twenty years later, the top cone's still not on there. And the street pavement's not designed to be able to handle that much traffic without the full design pavement section.
Well, the base, and the base pavement only has a certain period of life till it starts to break down.
Right. So I recommended that, you know, that be pumped up, it's required as a developer completes the full approved pavement design a little sooner than just whenever he wants to do it at the end, to get his bonding release.
The only thing I would say to that is usually they don't because of heavy machinery. They're not gonna spend the money to have it ripped back up.
I know, that's why it's so hard on the base course.
Well, right, but.
And again, it's on, it's on, I mean, what, does the township want to take over a road that's already fifteen years old? That the base is fifteen years old and has had construction traffic on it? And now the developer's just gonna put it in, you know, chalk it on it, cover it up and make it look pretty? How long is that really gonna last now?
Yeah.
Are you gonna get a full twenty-five, thirty years out of that street?
Is this in, does this coordinate with our current zoning? What's our zoning say about it?
Zoning doesn't have anything to do.
Nothing, okay, all right. So this is purely Salvo?
I see it all the time.
Yeah.
It really bothers me.
Well, you clearly have strong.
We, and we really had some issues back with, since two thousand and eight, when everything shut down and there was roads that were built, set in there.
That's what happened with Flowing Springs.
And.
It was sold in that time.
Exactly.
Yeah, I think the phase three of Flowing Springs, I don't know if the infrastructure was there when we purchased it, I don't think it was, because we had bills of.
I thought the base pavement was in.
Yeah.
Was it?
They had, the base pavement's fifteen years old now.
Right, which would be around two thousand and eight, two thousand and nine, well-ish.
It was all, the back two phases were all put in at the same time.
Were they?
Yeah.
Okay.
The loop.
I know.
The Tami Drive loop was in, when phase two was in.
That was involved.
The second loop that gives the block, and then the smaller block, that stuff was all put in when the sec, when that rest of it was approved initially.
Okay.
Or at least not the second phase was approved. The back phase were approved, that all stuff, that all was brought in.
Well, phase three is the horseshoe of Tami Drive, phase two would be, I think, Wendy, but yeah.
It was all, it was, that was all in it, but you could do the whole loop once that was in.
Okay.
The contractor wants to do howling destruction, let him put the stone base in, let him drive on that, let him do whatever he wants to build, and then when everything's done, then he can pave it and not have stuff dragging on it and ruining it before it gets covered up and no one can see it.
That's a fair point.
Then you're ended up with a bad road.
Yeah, forever, a bad road, yeah.
Because he'll never hold up.
No, it'll come back and fix it, yeah, okay.
There, I know in other municipalities, there's one in particular that I worked with, there's a longstanding dispute over a road where the township still has not accepted it, because there's a dispute over the condition of it, what it was supposed to be. It took so long to build, there was a dispute over what the condition of the road was when it came time for them to take it. They're like, this, you know, this isn't what, we're not gonna take it because it's.
It's not a new road.
As soon as, as soon as we take it, we're gonna have to, have to repave it. So, you know, then why would we, why would we take it? You know, which, as you probably imagined, left people owning houses on there not so happy.
Yeah.
You know, because it wasn't getting, the developer was long gone and wasn't plowing it. And township certainly wasn't gonna go back there and plow because they didn't, they didn't accept it, so it, yeah.
So Scott, I appreciate what you're saying, so does that need to be added in here somewhere? Because I've skimmed over it, I don't see it in here.
Yeah, it was under, it was in red light, he already pulled past it.
It's, it's the first paragraph on the top of page eight. We have a sentence there, additional building permits should not be approved until street construction is complete.
Where does, in this whole discussion, this whole discussion, where does bonding, you're, maintain a bond to cover repair of that base paving? I mean, you don't let that float?
I mean, that's not something that's considered.
Because, I mean, you.
I've never seen that included in a law.
I mean.
And it could be up the rest of the street.
Well, then the township, if it was, the township would have resources to.
Yeah, that's, that's what I'm saying.
Yeah.
There was, I know from experience that there was, where one set for like ten years, but they maintained a maintenance bond on that with the developer for that period of time, and the space paving, we had to go back in, identify and rip out and redo, I didn't, I directed them, had to rip it out, pull that bond, repair it, and then finish the paving out again. So, I don't know, is that any, excuse me, is that anything to consider in this whole discussion or not?
Absolutely.
Probably is, if you don't want to take the street, if the street ain't finished, don't take it. And you don't have a bond to cover the rest of the street that we rebuilt.
Would that, would that be enough for the descent, would that be enough for the descent of, for the developer to?
Solve.
Seems to me it would, yeah.
I don't, I don't know.
He has to keep maintaining that bond for that period of time.
Yeah, seems to me, yeah.
Have to get a fair amount of money if you got a, a bond good enough to cover the street.
But the whole purpose of that bond is protect the township.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So we don't want, have to take it.
Yeah.
If it ain't good, we don't want it.
Yeah.
Before it's played out, before it comes to us, we don't want.
I don't know how that, probably add confusion to that, saying that, but, well, you do maintain, like, whenever you put in a street, you maintain a bond for what, eighteen months? Is it? On the street, a maintenance bond?
It depends on what it says.
I think, most of them, I think they say eighteen months. After, when you bond your improvements, you bond your improvements, and then after you're, after they're completed, you have an eighteen-month maintenance bond. Pretty sure we got that.
But if they don't complete it for them, or they don't complete it for a particular year, now what do you do?
I, I. Well, after you take it over, they have to maintain two years.
Does ours say two years? Okay.
Yeah, I understand what you're saying, but if it was bad when, or, or out before they finish, and it got bad right away.
Well, and that's what we're trying to.
Yeah.
Solve, yeah.
Yeah, the current says eighteen months.
Okay.
That's what I thought.
That seems fair.
Now, that. Yeah, it's eighteen months, and if, if it's not completed, if things aren't, quite a lot of these, if it's not completed, then you extend that.
Well, if it's not completed, it doesn't get released.
It doesn't get released, right.
This is, it's eighteen months.
After it's completed.
After it's done, it's fifteen percent of the previous financial security amount.
Right.
Okay.
Because I had some experience with that, you know, we had to pull a bond off of the developer that went up, and that was the same, that was the issue I'm talking, we're talking about. It was just base paving for like, set in there for ten years and luckily had, the township had the wherewithal to keep the maintenance bond active. And they pulled that and then they were able to fix the road and finish it off.
How easy was it to pull that kind of a bond?
I was, attorneys did all that, it was, I don't think, didn't, yeah, they had some, the developer didn't just roll over, they had to fight for it, but they got it.
I don't think it sounds that hard.
What?
I don't think it sounds that hard.
Well, it's tough to get the money out of the insurance company.
Well, that's, that's a separate issue, though.
Yeah, but that's.
I get that part.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. Okay.
In terms of the Salvo, your perspective is, you have designs, there's what you want the finished product to look like.
Right.
And it has to get to that product, the mechanics of how it gets there, is like the end product, if you accept it, has to be in a certain condition, that's what you're trying to.
Yeah, and I think you got that with your sentence at the top of the page, right? I think we all agree on that.
No.
Okay.
Uh, let's see, the next three sections, initially, again, you have, you have, Article five designs in, Article six are sort of the improvement construction requirements. We pulled the next three that were stormwater management, storm drainage and E and S control up in design standards and place that, from that section. Okay, Scott, this is, this is not a good one.
Yeah, this was all, this, everything else written, I added.
No, I'm.
Like, for the erosion control, I recommend that we require, even though conservation district might not require it, we require it even for small projects. If someone's building a home right next to a stream, they're not gonna have any. Erosion control, you know, we have to be able to go in and say, hey, you have to follow the plan, we have to come up with a plan for that.
I know from, internally, we have our internal meeting where we sit down and discuss all of the subdivision plans that come in, and we involve, we sort of invite the reviewers from conservation to sit down, to sit on them so that they, they can see what we, what we get initially, that's sometimes different than what let's do, let's do, they get. And one of the constant comments they have are where the impact area is drawn so narrowly that try to avoid things, that it, you question, how can you get to those areas to, to actually build what you're looking, looking to build, to try to keep it under certain, certain dimensions?
Right.
And it's a constant battle when they're part of, I, look, you're not getting, that twenty-foot strip you have there is not gonna work. But they can't say anything about it. But if the township has, the township has something to say, hey, you're gonna, we need to see this, they're gonna do, then they want to meet it, then gives conservation district to guys, if that's expanded, then they can comment and get to it, so.
I understand the point, I am a little concerned, are we asking too much of a homeowner building a house? I mean, it's, it's, I don't want to burden our taxpayers so much with something like erosion and sediment control, so is this, I haven't read this, is it well-balanced here to, not everybody's, you know, a multimillion dollar developer?
Right, right, I mean, that's where your township engineer uses a little engineering sense.
Yes.
So, I mean, you don't, you don't treat, you know, five hundred lot subdivision the same way you treat a one lot.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But is the language, does the language get us there, Scott? Because I don't want the language to treat everybody like the, like the two thousand.
Yeah, I think it does, and I, I use a threshold of five thousand square feet, which is also in our stormwater.
Yeah.
As a threshold for that.
Yeah, okay.
So anything above five thousand square feet requires, you know, some type of erosion control plan that I, that I review and determine if it's adequate or not.
So there are those kind of stormwater impacts.
Exactly. Yeah, and depending on the lot size, if it's graduated there, we're under a stormwater.
Yeah, I remember that, we had that issue, okay. And that was good, that was a good outcome. Okay.
I don't expect someone to come in with a ten sheet plan of erosion control details.
Yeah, I just want to make sure we weren't headed there, that's all.
I guess I have a question as to why we would want more than the sole conservation. That's their job. That's their requirements.
Well, if we're.
Their requirement is one acre. That's what they've been told that their requirement is.
And anything under one acre, they don't even.
Not unless the township asks them to.
Yeah, it's out of their jurisdiction.
What's happening is because they'll have the limits of disturbance drawn so tightly around what they're, what they're doing.
Yeah.
Then you can look at it and say.
Just to stay under the one acre.
Yeah, and look at, anybody with.
Point nine five acres is under an acre.
Yeah, yeah.
Anybody with some knowledge of how a construction site works, look at it and say, I, I, how are you gonna get around that to, you're gonna stay within that little bat, little strip you have between the edge here and the limits of disturbance? No, of course you're not, you're gonna go over it.
You gotta feather it out, feather it a grade, you're not gonna put a three to one alignment right next to your house.
But again, they're restricted by that law that says, they know darn well that it's going to go beyond that limit of disturbance, but there's nothing they can do about it.
Right, right.
Now, not every engineer is pushing those limits, there are certain ones that push it more than others.
We know.
But.
And for storm building design, that's your first time out. I don't understand why everyone has to have their own separate storm, storm design, we all can say math, and we're all, we can say targets.
Which is part of the point I'm driving at.
Right.
Let's not have extra requirements on somebody that's not necessary. Okay, thank you.
Five thirteen covers impact studies. This, this section is used, that we've written, that we use across multiple municipalities that, was actually, actually written, where we pulled it from, was written by that township here, from their traffic and engineering sub-division, who I forget who that was. This, this is, it's situations where there's a development plan that, I'll give you an example, use an example, I don't think that's been in township, but it's not a great example, but it, you know, they have the plan for Camp Underwood Drive, which goes behind Giant and there. Once that's in place, and somebody wants to develop that property behind it and connect to that, that's gonna be a township street, there's gonna be traffic impacts from those developments out, beyond that. But it's not going to trigger a traffic impact study from Pendot, because, where those are traditionally triggered, because there's no, they don't need state H O P, it's just township level. So if you have developments that are gonna impact a township road, township road, this gives you the ability to require with some standards for that traffic study, so that you're protected in case it's development that is going, that is going to have, you know, it's gonna have some impacts. You're, you're applying those standards so that they can't get away with, not with, avoiding. So, now, again, most municipalities, that's, that's rare, this is where that occurs, most things that trigger traffic that are gonna be on state road, but.
It happens, we had one here.
You know, sometimes it, it, it happens.
Yeah.
Similarly, with the water supply.
Before you leave that, though, there's a lot of subjective words in this, and I guess that partly it's necessary, but, you know, significant trip generation estimates, significant traffic problems, significantly affect, I'm a little concerned about that. I like the idea of requiring a traffic study in circumstances you presented, Andy. I'm a little concerned about the subjectivity.
Well, the first part, first part of that is, is increase of A T of greater than fifty for any residential project of five or twelve units. Oh, no, sorry, it proves an increase of A T of greater than fifty, and for any residential project include five or twelve, so if it's, it has hit a certain, certain threshold there to even get to that.
This is additionally, even if it doesn't need to fifty, these can trigger.
The super, they may trigger it beyond that. In most cases, that's, that's gonna be determined by the I T, the generation, or what the use is. is. You know, really, the, those.
Traffic engineering is not exactly, you know, perfectly defined.
No, I guess, I've studied it.
We're talking about levels of service, you know, A, B, C, and there's.
Look, we're gonna go through a process that goes through a hearing, and I'm concerned about the subjective words, as our township residents look at this and say, well, now, how often is a traffic study gonna get thrown into what I'm doing, or what individuals are doing? Because you have, you have words like significant in there. That's why I like to define things. So, our residents know when something's gonna get triggered and when it isn't. That's my point. I realize you can't be objective with everything. There's a lot of subjectivity around what we do. But a traffic study isn't insignificant.
No, but in the 25 years I've been here, and we've had zoning, we haven't had that many incidents. When I first came here, we had the Moma's trailer park. And that was two roads in and out, and 300, or 285 old homes. And we were arguing with him, how many trips in and out are gonna be there?
I know.
He was saying that they were gonna be homebound.
I understand, Gus. I'm not, I'm not even talking about past things, because we talk about the debacle that the, that the sports complex was, traffic study we put in that was waived, which still makes me angry, not the point. The point is that I wanna be able, I want to be in a position where we can state with some definitiveness when this is gonna reply. And Andy, your point around the ADT is great, but then, in addition, supervisors may require, is the language where I start to get trouble.
I mean, I can, Richard, see if there's, if there's somebody that can define some of that.
Okay.
I'll see.
All right.
So, I'll see what I can find.
All right. Because there also, you can do a preliminary study without doing a full-blown traffic study, to see what the increase would be, and maybe there's a triggering there. I don't, I can't remember seeing anything on, I've seen that done, but I can't remember seeing anything that would fit here.
I.
All right, perfect. Take a look, yep. Sorry to hang us up on that, but that's the kind of thing that, that causes a great deal of stress in these situations.
Just to be clear, the fact that those seven.
I understand.
Exactly what he's saying.
Clearly, the seven standards would only apply, like the supervisor, that's probably what the supervisor may require, so that would trigger, anything that's over those thresholds, that doesn't come into play. It's only the ones where it's very specific circumstances where that would trigger that. But I'm trying to think of a good example. You could have a known intersection that is bad, and there's something, something's happening right near that, that might not trigger it, but you know, by the numbers, but you know, it's adding to something that's already bad, you want them to take a look at it there, because they might need, it might need to have some brush cut back, or it might need to have a tree taken.
Or may need a stop sign that one wasn't there before. Yeah, I understand, yeah. What's that, Scott?
Like an bank meant to.
Yeah.
To make the site distance.
Yeah, yeah. Okay.
Let's see. Article 415 talks about water supply, usability reports. That's in there, most ordinances have to have something like that.
That's in there to guarantee maybe these lots, I was gonna, water supply.
Yeah. The amount that we're getting, it's usually triggered by non-residential development at this point, because developing any significant residential density on wells, that's rare. Most of those have, will have package systems, or connect, or connect, want that nowadays.
Okay.
Article 515, I had, this is something that we've added to ours. I'm not, and that's up to each municipality. I had, in full disclosure, this came about because I have one municipality that I work with, they want, every new development, residential that comes in, they want an HOA to own and maintain everything. Roads, stormwater, everything. And this is an example where I had to say, okay, I will give you what you want, you have my objection to, that that's not good public policy, but I will give you what, I will give you what you want in your ordinance. So, this kind of lays out, and HOAs, there's a state law that covers, you know, condo associations, and then HOAs, and those sort of things, that we pulled, and it's referenced in the Plan Community Act, the Uniform Condominium Act, that references some of this. And basically, it talks about part of subdivision or land plans involving X, they want, they have, they have a unit trigger, I think Scott and I had talked about.
I'm gonna take out the unit trigger.
Yeah, and talks about.
Versus 12.
Community areas, streets, or.
Now, those community areas are private property that needs to be maintained collectively. I think, again, somebody wants HOA to be required.
Okay.
For all the private, private stuff.
Right.
Yeah, yeah.
Just because someone has a subdivision with 12 units, and everything's gonna be public, you know, I don't see why that should trigger them, that it created.
It's whom, yeah, you're right.
Again, so that's why, that's why I said, with the context initially.
Yeah.
This came from developing a township that wanted everything to be privately owned.
Even though it was, would have otherwise been public?
Yes.
Oh, God. Yeah, okay.
And again, that was, that came from pretty much one supervisor who wanted everything to be private. And everybody else was going along with it, so. And that's where, some of it else comes in here, they, it, again, it's sort of in, paying a little homage to the idea that they want, that they probably will still expect some oversight. B, everything under B talks about what the HOA would have to do, and report to the township to make sure that they're, that it's actually being governed the way it's supposed to, so that if something falls off the ground, they can step in.
Okay. Where did that language come from?
I wrote it.
Okay.
Now, some of it came, some of it came out of the Acts themselves.
Okay.
Some of it came, came from that municipality's preferences.
Okay.
Like the last, last part there, 13, about how often.
Can you scroll, Gus, to 13?
We're gonna have to scroll.
Right there, right there's good.
There, about how often they have to provide meeting minutes of financial reports to the board, that they wanted, they wanted every court, basically court.
Okay.
So.
Okay.
But again, the context.
Yeah.
That came, what's, the way Scott amended it here about when it would apply, is kind of how, direction that we would go. I wasn't, we weren't fully on board with that other, other direction.
Understandable.
You know?
Yeah.
But again, I also recognize that there is some school thought out there that says that, you know, especially not be accepting roads for dedication anymore, too.
Yeah.
But that's a, that's a policy decision, not a plan.
Yeah. Do we have HOAs in the town? Not one, right?
Not one.
I didn't think so.
Well, you got, like, maybe.
Not us.
That's not us.
Not us.
Yeah, that's not.
Flowing Springs, there are one?
We, no, that was designed purposely to not have one. That's why we have the two stormwater ponds connected to one property.
The three most successful that I'm aware of in the county are Two Lakes.
Like Harry, like me.
They made, and Hampton Heights.
Oh, Hampton Heights.
Hampton Heights, too.
Hampton Heights has one, it's fairly active, in terms of doing, maintaining stuff, because they're, they have some responsibilities there. At least it's, at least it's active enough to be, that the township is referencing it. But beyond that, there might, there might be some other places, but those are the three, three that we're most aware of in my office.
And you have to add into that, you have to have a certain threshold where they become viable, because if they're small, they don't, you can't, you can't be charging people, you know, residents.
You'll never sell, you'll never.
And I, they're, you know, point they, no, I guess I would, I will assume that at full build-out, Amberbrook will have something equivalent to that there.
I would think.
It's, with all the amenities they have, they, it almost has to have something, something like that.
Yeah.
I will say, though, that there is a certain developer in the county, whose entire business model is developing similar type of units, marketing it to the people that want that sort of thing, without paying the monthly amenity and HOA fees. And he does a very successful job at it, too, with that. So, there's both models out, but I would imagine Amberbrook would be, would be another one, but, I mean, look at those three examples, those are, those are three, those are three borough-sized developments.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, that's the exception. We're not, we're not talking, you know, suburb around Harrisburg, Mechanicsburg, where, you know, there, where it's a different story.
Yeah.
So, Flowing Springs sort of had their own, you know, wastewater treatment plant or something that they had to put in, they would have to have either an HOA to own and manage it, or they'd have to create a sewer.
Right.
So, we're talking about stuff like that.
Yeah.
They would have taken out of the store.
Which is why that's, what you've done here is important, because that can happen.
And you, I don't know if you've seen in ours, but I know, I know you've commented in other municipalities that have lot development, one of the pet peeves that the planning office has, and will have, is, and I, I know why my neighbor bought the property, he bought it specifically because he wanted the extra land that came with it, is stormwater facilities on private lots and developments, you know, when one, one private property is responsible for a public serving infrastructure. And I get, I know why my neighbor bought his property, because he wanted that.
He wanted the land, yeah.
You know, and his landscaping, he maintains, he's a fairly good job with it. I would say that he's the exception to the rule county-wide, but, you know, from a policy standpoint, we don't like it, but.
Yeah.
That's our, that's our opinion, too, so.
As a planner, do you think, do you think this Amberbrook had done a good job? I mean, I know it's a loaded question, right?
That's ask, that's ask, and Andy will want to.
I would, I would, I would, I am, I would say this, I'm surprised at how, at how, at the rate of their build-out, they're up to shade-under 400 bit permits pulled, not shade under 500 permits, but new permits pulled.
When it's four, how many are they gonna?
2,000, a little over 2,000.
200.
Yeah, yeah.
So, their goal is, they're aiming for 200 a year, over 10-year build-out, which they haven't hit yet. So, I am, we are a little surprised that they are, they are selling, selling that many at those price points.
Yeah.
The downside that isn't, that they don't want people to know, is that the resale rate in there is enormous, because the construction quality of the initial builds is so bad that, that people.
It depends on the quality.
Yeah.
It's the three. Doesn't, isn't, isn't one builder building them all?
No, there's about, there's at least three.
Lots of lots to a single.
I was, I was, I was, I was costed by a real estate.
Yeah, I get it, a different builder.
Totally different qualities.
Go ahead with your sentence, I'd like to hear the end of that.
I was costed by a real estate agent at a meeting I was at, at today, who was demanding to know why a certain national builder was allowed to build, build in there, because their quality, their claims, their quality was so bad, I'm like, my problem. But the, the initial sales prices are enormous, the resale rates are significant, there's more turnover in there than you would probably expect at that, at that price point. It is damaging comp, comparables for other real estate sales.
As it would, yes.
Outside of Amberbrook.
Yeah, as it would.
That is, that is becoming a, becoming a growing problem. There's certainly, when you can talk about the Lynx and Amberbrook, you're selling, they're becoming comps for each other.
That's a good point.
It's, so it's creating, it's creating issues there. Our overall concern has always been, how quickly can they, can they build it out, and can they build it out fast enough so that it's fully done before the baby boomer generation ages out, buying that sort of thing? And once you hit Gen X and lower, they're gonna have to change their price points, because that's simply not, not affordable down there.
They're not gonna have the money for it. They're not, or they're not gonna, like I say, forget it.
And the flip side to us with that was, if that happens, how long does it, is it, does it take before it converts from 55-plus to, just like the Two Lakes did, just like Carol Berry did, going from vacation home, vacation second homes to permanent residence?
Fully open.
And then you have 2,000 units of high school kids, of all ages.
Kids and, I mean.
Yeah.
Which families that have kids, which they didn't anticipate.
Right. And then you have all of the, that brings a whole different set of, set of issues there. Think about where that is located compared to.
Yeah.
The type of facilities that an all-age development accesses. All, you know, all the elementary schools are on the south side, are on the south side of town. I mean, that's, that's, you're probably, you're probably talking, what, two, three?
That's what I would have said.
Anybody's guess, yeah.
At least.
Through, through.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, that was the draw before, it wasn't gonna tax the school districts right now, but it was gonna bring revenue in.
You got 2,000.
That was the draw.
Probably have a thousand houses of kids in.
Yeah.
And we've all, that's been our concern, is knowing, again, planners, we look at demographics, that's a data nerd, and looking at that, how quickly is that, can they build it out quick enough, that, can they afford enough to get it built, and then, can they sustain, sustain that design?
Maintain it.
Unless they get into those next two generations down there, the money's not there, in there, I mean, the homeownership.
And if the quality of some of the houses, is that, I mean, what has it been, three, four years? And already complaining about the quality?
Well, they have, some of it had leaks, some of it didn't, and so.
Andy, do you have more?
I have a couple, a couple more things here, on page 27 and 1. Those, like 504 off-street parking, that's in, it's currently section 403 in your Salo, but that's all stuff that's, is covered, a lot of it's covered in your zoning ordinance. That's a REM, looks like a REM that from before that's out.
Prior zoning.
So, I would say that, that probably all comes off. Now, there might be some things in there that have to go into the zoning ordinance that we can address once we amend it.
Okay.
Same thing with the design standards, floodplains.
Is that duplicated in the floodplain ordinance?
Right. Yeah, it seems like a remnant of a prior time before these things were, were addressed by other things. There doesn't make sense to include those.
Okay.
In there anymore. So, that, that takes us to the design standard section.
Okay.
Next, what we can address next month is the improvement in construction requirements. I'm not sure, so we can probably get, we can get through that.
Is that the Article six?
Yeah, we can get through that.
What are the numbers on that?
What?
What section's that?
Design. Article, it's, design standards is Article five.
Article five.
Yeah, and improvement in construction requirements is Article six.
Okay.
In the meantime, I'm going to get a few more home parts, and ship those off to Scott here, so we can look at, and do this, something similar here, so that we can get back.
Teach these developments how, how about the designs of standard for chicken houses or pigs.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you, Andy.
Really appreciate it. It's a lot of work.
Something you should think about, you know, make a note.
Okay.
If you have any questions that come on, feel free to name me or you ask us.
Okay. Thanks, Scott.
Last item here is your public comments. You have?
First, I want to compliment Mr. Strike, this may come as a surprise, but you're very engaged as far as all the subjects tonight. And as a resident, I appreciate it, especially the fact when you indicated when a private resident wants to build a home versus these large developers. So I compliment you on your engagement. You seem very knowledgeable also.
Thank you.
So I have something short written up. At last month's Planning Commission meeting during my public comment concerning the P.A. Sunshine Act violation by this commission, I was rudely interrupted by Roxy Sobel, the Planning Commission secretary. She stated that the township employee, Gus Brendan Valls, had apologized and that I should just move on. I found this statement by a Planning Commission member to be hypocritical since this commission had recently submitted a proposed township burn ordinance to the Board of Supervisors for its approval. The proposed burn ordinance prepared by this commission included a fine of up to $1,000 for any violation by your fellow residents. But Roxy Sobel, secretary to this commission, believed that a verbal apology by a township employee should suffice for the Pennsylvania Sunshine Act violation by this commission. With that said, I just have three questions. I'm requesting the name of the Adams County employee that Gus contacts for publication of the agenda. The employee that you contacted at Adams County to put the agenda on the website.
That's Shane Rome.
So I'm questioning, why is it that township employee Gus is responsible for the publication of the agenda rather than Roxy Sobel, the secretary to this commission?
I can answer that. Gus is, he's involved in the town as a zoning officer, he's aware of all the contacts with people coming in here and presenting new plans and things like that. So he, he's in the forefront, you know, with these plans, you know, knowing what's gonna be on the agenda.
Okay.
And where Roxy is, I mean, she's a secretary, but she's not in here to accept plans and do that, you know, all the initial upfront work.
Yeah, I just don't get it, why she can't be doing the agenda publication, but that's fine. I mean, so is Gus also responsible for the preparation of the agenda?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, he is. And it follows back to what I was just saying, at one time I prepared that agenda, but I wasn't aware of all, Gus is right on spot with the people coming in here. He knows what plans are up for, you know, he follows that whole process. Because he's the first contact, he's the first contact as a zoning officer with developers and...
So does the secretary for the commission prepare the minutes, though?
Yes.
Yes.
That's a legal document.
Right. Okay, thank you, Mr. Strike.
If I could add, in our experience, that it is most common throughout most municipalities where the municipal staff prepares the agenda, the agenda packets, and often does the minutes themselves. Not a re-planning commission out there actually has an appointed secretary, but a lot of them stop with the chair and vice chair because they have, like the municipal secretary does it, that on the meetings themselves. So it varies, it does, that can vary, but it's most common for the municipal staff to develop agendas, the packets, and communicate that to everybody.
It all stems back to, they're the people that are in first contact with all these because...
Thank you.
Paul, do you have anything?
Yeah, I'd like to encourage you fellows to talk to Mr. King if you have any conditions for the hearing or be present at the hearing for TAM.
Hmm, okay.
It'll be on May the 30th.
30th. What time?
Seven. Seven o'clock.
If I can make a comment, Mr. Chair.
Yes.
I think it would be good for all of us to be at hearings henceforth to make our comments known if it's appropriate. I don't think we need to interject, but if there's something that the supervisors look on us to provide our expertise, it's good to be there.
The more people look at it, the easier it is.
I'll add, in my, hate to throw back into my old past, but most of the townships I dealt with reviewed, the planning commission reviewed the zoning cases before they were shipped off to, for the hearing and got a recommendation.
I would, there's, oftentimes there's like a requirement, zoning ordinance, when it comes to administrative section, that will say some limit to special exceptions, some variances, and that's that sort of thing that would require it. Your attorney can probably talk about this more, there's case law legislation that's coming out that's geared toward certain types of uses that would attempt to limit the, like restrict the review to staff or just that, to cut out outside boards for various political or non-political reasons. So, but that's, when that happens, that's usually because of a specific zoning ordinance requires, the county ordinance requires that we take special exceptions or conditional uses to the county planning commission. The variances do not, so.
Yeah, it's, I know I've been through that process a lot and you would get recommendations from the planning board and you take them, and then the zoning hearing board considers that, they don't have to do anything with it, but they consider, but they at least have their comments there that they can consider before.
Well, this goes before the board of supervisors.
Well, it's conditional use.
Understood.
So it's, yeah, it's not really a zoning...
You're talking about that specifically, the next hearing?
Yeah.
Yeah, understood.
Yeah, I was talking about...
You were more general.
I was more general, I was talking more in terms of zoning hearings.
Yeah.
But for what it's worth, that's been my experience, but for better or worse, sometimes it's, I mean, you can get in there and get all those comments, and like I said, you can get all those comments from everybody, and it's where that zoning hearing board decides to, you know, based on the hearing and the testimonies and things, they take that into consideration. They don't have to, though.
No, they don't.
But pointing out that theoretically, you know, only conditions, decisions should or conditions should only be based on actual testimony that's given.
At that hearing.
If, they're not, some do, you're not supposed to, but you're not supposed to issue a condition or make a decision based on what you think, it's based on what the actual testimony is.
Right.
Okay, if there's anything else considered, if not, I'll, now, the next meeting is Monday, June 24th, and I entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll make that.
Motion made. Need a second?
I'll second.
Second, my Jeff. Paul, in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Say a aye.